Honored guests, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm the Boris Page Director of Marketing and Communications for the City of Portsmouth, and it is indeed an honor and a privilege for me to officially welcome you to the oath of office ceremony. Let's give all of our arteries a hand. At this time, we will begin with the posting of the colors by the City of Portsmouth Honor Guard, followed by a patriotic salute to America, the national anthem sang by Ms. Pamela Morris, Choral Director of Woodrow Wilson High School. Please stand. You may be seated. Happy holidays to everyone. What an auspicious occasion to close the year 2012 with another chapter of our historical past. The members of the City Council are committed to bold leadership for the future, and they also share a passion for Portsmouth. Today's ceremony is a celebration of citizens just like you who wish to encourage and nurture the ideas of fellow citizens, our employees, business leaders, and the faith-based community to embrace new endeavors towards shaping the vision for the future. At this time, I would like to make a few introductions of local and state representatives that are with us today. We have Councilman William Moody Jr., Councilwoman Marlene Randall, Councilman Stephen E. Heretic, Councilman Paige Cherry, Delegate Matthew James, Mr. Frankie Edmondson, Commissioner of the Revenue, Mr. William Watson, Sheriff. We have our City Assessor, Ms. Janie Culpepper, our new City Manager, Mr. John Rowe. Representing the Portsmouth Public School School Board, we have Costella Williams. Mr. Ted Lamb of the School Board is also here. And we also have former City Councilmember, Mr. Ray Smith. Let's give them all a hand. Now, the moment that we've all been waiting for. This evening, the oaths will be administered by City Clerk Deborah White. Up first, Councilman-elect Danny Meeks. Councilman-elect Danny Meeks is joined by his wife Katie, who will be holding the Bible, and with them are their lovely daughters Alyssa and Paige.
Sir, please state your name.
Danny Meeks.
And repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
Impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
And common upon me.
Common upon me.
As City Councilman.
As City Councilman.
Of the City of Portsmouth.
City of Portsmouth.
According to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for Councilman Danny Meeks. We pray right now, God, that you would give him the strength, empower him with what he needs, to be a blessing to the City of Portsmouth, this great city. God, that he were honored, and that the family would stand behind him, his wife, and his family, and those that are praying with him and for him, that he would do a wonderful and great job for the City of Portsmouth. God, we thank you for it, and we believe you for it. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
At this time, we would like to ask members of Councilman Meeks' family to stand and be recognized if you're in the audience. Thank you.
You may be seated. Thank you.
And also Reverend Antonio Stevenson, who is a pastor of New Jerusalem Family Church, administered the prayer. Next, we have Councilwoman-elect Elizabeth M. Simmons.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, in your name.
I, Elizabeth Simmons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
And common upon me.
And common upon me.
As City Councilwoman.
As City Councilwoman.
Of the City of Portsmouth.
Of the City of Portsmouth.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Holding the Bible for Councilwoman Simmons is her nephew, Robert Simmons Jr. Councilwoman Simmons has several members of her family in the audience. We would like for you to stand if you can. Thank you very much. And at this time, the Reverend Dr. Christopher Morris, he is a Dietrich Bonhoeffer Professor of Theology and Ethics, Union Theological Seminary in New York, will administer the prayer.
Let us pray. Almighty God of grace and glory, as we join together in asking your blessing upon these elected to serve in public office, grant that all our prayers may be in your name and in your spirit. We give you thanks that we live in a free country where we have the right to choose those who will govern us, and where those chosen to govern are held accountable for the justice and well-being of all those who are committed to their care. Now we pray that you will confirm each oath that is taken this evening with the power of your Holy Spirit, that it will be remembered through the days ahead, that in all times, whether of prosperity or of hardship, this city may ever remain a community faithful to your righteous calling to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you, O God, by whose grace we make our prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilman Curtis Edmonds. Holding the Bible for him is his wife Evelyn, and they are joined by his aunt, Mrs. Mabel Scott.
Sir, if you will stand. Mrs. Edmonds, if you will be here. Ma'am, if you will stand right here, and we'll give you the Bible. If you would please state your name, or raise your right hand, and place your left hand on the Bible first, and state your name.
Curtis Eugene Edmonds Sr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
And common upon me.
And common upon me.
As City Councilman.
As City Councilman.
Of the City of Portsmouth.
Of the City of Portsmouth.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. You're welcome.
Councilman Edmonds had several members of his family in the audience that are sharing this special moment with him. We would ask if you would stand to be recognized. At this time, the Reverend Dr. William Hampton will offer prayer. He is the pastor of the Mount Calvary Baptist Church here in Portsmouth.
Our Father in heaven, we consider it an honor and a privilege to come before thy throne for such an occasion as this. We thank you, Heavenly Father, that we stand tonight with a man of integrity, and we pray, Heavenly Father, that your Holy Spirit will shine through him, that which you have already placed upon him. We know, Heavenly Father, that difficult decisions may have to be made, decisions, Lord God, that may not be popular with the masses, but Heavenly Father, help him to keep himself humbly before you, and we pray that you would let the words of his mouth and the meditations of his heart be acceptable in thy sight. Help him, Heavenly Father, with the wisdom that you gave to Solomon, that he too may have the same wisdom to help lead this city. And Lord God, while we pray, we pray that you would bless this city, for we stand in need of so much, and you are the one who can provide. Bless him now, his family, and all of the council. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, we have Mayor Kenneth Wright. Holding the Bible for him this evening is his wife Tomasina. They are joined by their lovely daughters Ashley, Brianna, Christina, and Danielle.
I want to stand there, Mom or Dad. I'll stand right there. Stand. Sir, we're going to have you stand right there near there. You've done it, okay? Repeat after me. I, in your name.
I, Kenneth Urban Wright.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
And common upon me.
And common upon me.
As mayor.
As mayor.
Of the City of Portsmouth.
Of the City of Portsmouth.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let us pray. Eternate God, our Father, we come even now thanking you, Lord, for this day. Thank you, O God, for this moment as we come to share this great occasion, and Lord, for the historical city. God, we thank you for what you have done already, and what you're doing even now. And now, Lord, as the mayor of the city, Mayor Kenneth Wright, come now, Lord, we pray for his vision. We pray that you continue to lead and guide him, God, with his lovely wife, his family. God, we pray even now for the historical city, that you were blessed, Lord, that you would let it be all it was, you would have it to be. We pray even now, God, that you continue to provide leadership and guidance and wisdom to our mayor, as you have already done. You have done a wonderful job thus far. God, we know with you all things are possible. So bless it right now, and keep him, Lord, for days to come, the challenging moments, God, as this year comes to a close, as they let go of the past, and as we embark upon a new year, we pray that embrace all you, God, we have it to be, for this historical city, and for this moment as we share. Father, we thank you, and we ask you in your precious and adorant name, of Jesus the Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor Wright has several members of his family in the audience, and we would ask that you stand to be recognized as well. Reverend Gregory Yancey Sr., pastor of the Morning Star Baptist Church, administered the prayer.
Thank you.
And at this time, the podium goes to the mayor.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking the Portsmouth family for once again honoring me with your trust and your hopes for this city. Not a day goes by that I'm not proud to serve as your mayor, and as such, I am excited about the positive changes that we're making for Portsmouth's future. As I look around, I am reminded what makes this city great. It is clearly our people, you. We are truly a kaleidoscope of white, black, brown, men, women, young, old, middle-aged, white collar, blue collar, liberals, conservatives, rich, poor, and everything in between. Our diversity is our greatest strength, and with open arms and warm hearts, we continue to learn how to uplift each other, because in Portsmouth, we know that the quality of our lives is dependent on the quality of all of our lives. Our City Council consists of seven members, each who bring different talents and views to the task ahead, and the past, our City Council relationships have been defined by our differences. As long as we allow that to continue, we will empower those who sow hatred and stood a peace, and who promote conflict and stood a cooperation. The cycle of suspicion and discord must end. It is time for a new beginning in this historic city, one based upon mutual interests and mutual respect. I recognize that change will not happen overnight. No single speech can eradicate years of mistrust. Nevertheless, I am convinced that in order to move forward, we must say openly the things that we hold in our hearts and too often only say behind closed doors. There must be a sustained effort to listen to each other, to learn from each other, to respect one another, and to seek common ground. New times demand new answers. Old problems cry out for better results. This evening, we leave behind the old ways, the old divisions, and begin a new day for Portsmouth. Now, I am proud to lead a city that's united in common purpose and driven by a common thirst for change. I know each of us on this council, all firmly committed to doing what's best for the City of Portsmouth and her citizens. We share that agenda, and we will need to work together as an effective team to be able to address the many needs of this city. City Councilmembers, new and old, I reach out a hand of mutual respect and cooperation, and I welcome your ideas for change. Each of us on this council wants to provide great service for our residents. We all want to attract new businesses. We all want to provide safety for our citizens and our visitors. We want to maintain and improve our infrastructure. We all want Portsmouth to grow and prosper. We all want to improve our neighborhoods, and we all want to address all of these needs without creating a debt or a tax burden that is beyond the means of our taxpayers. Now, that's a tall order, and it calls for a new spirit of cooperation from each and every one of us. Now, I believe that this new City Council and our appointed staff need to dedicate ourselves to an open relationship with frank exchange of ideas. We have a talented and dedicated staff of City employees. Their collective efforts and our openness to their ideas and innovations can give a new energy to our city and to its government. Now, I believe in teamwork. No one is going to do it alone and accomplish as much as we can achieve together. I also welcome input from the entire Portsmouth family, whether they're creative suggestions or complaints. We welcome them. I know many of you share my belief that this city, with its great history, its spectacular scenic beauty, and its creative, hard-working residents, will have a prosperous future if we all just work together. So as we come together and take stock of who we are, our Portsmouth DNA, I have no doubt that what will carry us forward. We know that we can create jobs, we can build stronger and safer neighborhoods, we can improve our schools, we can provide more affordable housing. Like the song that they taught us in elementary school, Portsmouth is for people, all kinds of people. Today, knowing that all of our potential remains, we inaugurate a new era of shared innovation. Today, Portsmouth renews its spirit of self-determination. State and federal government will not do the hard work for us. In fact, sometimes they'll make it even harder. It is now in our hands to build a future that sustains us and where our children inherit a city that is stronger than what we found. Citizenship is not a transaction where you pay taxes and sit back and expect everything to get better on its own. Citizenship is an opportunity and a duty in which everyone contributes to and benefits from a greater good. Everyone, everyone, has responsibilities in our homes, in our church, in our neighborhoods, at school, at work, and even online through social media. We must demand accountability from government and from each other. When we come together with a collective spirit of urgency, our people and our business, empowered by that self-determination, will transform our city and our image. Now, what does that mean for the next four years? It means that we've never done it before is no longer an excuse. It should be a reason to try it. It means that go-along attitude is neither a path to get there or a destination. It means that at the top of our agenda are the hard tasks that are still left undone. Together, we must take smart, creative steps toward a brighter, stronger future for our city. We will be guided by our common values, our common sense, our selfless beliefs, that we are all a small part of something much bigger than ourselves. Yes, I'm an optimist, but if I've learned one thing in public service, I've learned that we are a city of optimists, and we are a city that must lead. Leading does not mean directing the traffic in the way that it's already going. Leading means rising above personalities, rising above politics, and finding the best way for tomorrow. Not the easiest, but the best. Not the most popular, the best. Not the one that costs absolutely nothing, the one that is absolutely the best. Portsmouth should not wait for others to take that first step. To be our very best, the City of Portsmouth should collaborate when it can, but move forward on its own when it must for success within this region and throughout this country. It is clearly time for a new beginning in this historic city. It is time for us to stop fearing our diversity. It is time to stop letting lawyers, developers, bankers, and yet misguided politicians put fear in us about our diversity. In 1931, President Franklin D. Roosevelt, in his inaugural address, told the nation that the only thing that we have to fear is fear itself. We don't need to fear a disparage study. We don't need to fear a jail study, and we don't need to fear the diversity of our city. Our strength lies within our diversity. Now, just look at what 72% of our citizens just did in this last election. We now have one of the most diverse city councils in our history, black, white, young, old, male, female. This is what 72% of our citizens said they wanted, and as leaders, this is exactly what we should demand out of our development communities, out of our subcontracting community, and out of our employment community. It is time for a diversity study in the City of Portsmouth, and it's time to let everybody know that this city is open for business for everybody, because Portsmouth is for people, all kinds of people. Now, as we enter into this new year, we, as a City Council, will meet next week to select the vice mayor. This will be your first glimpse at how we plan to govern as a body. Now, in my view, Stevie Wonder can see who our next vice mayor should be, okay? Let's hope that this City Council puts leadership over friendship and make the right choice. We need a vice mayor that is willing to work with me and to support me in unifying our city, our council, our staff, and everyone in between. As Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. stated over 40 years ago, unity is the great need of the hour, not because it sounds good and not because it makes us feel good. It is the only way that we're going to overcome the problems that exist in our city. We need a vice mayor that's willing to be visible within our community, a vice mayor that's willing to provide leadership on our council. We need a vice mayor that's committed to attending committee meetings. But most importantly, we need a vice mayor that will put leadership over friendship. So I look forward to our council's decision next week. And finally, I want to address the quality of life of our citizens in our community. As I stated before, our greatest assets are our people and our strong middle-class neighborhoods. The quality of life in our neighborhoods is absolutely The quality of life in our neighborhoods is absolutely critical. It's critical to our young people. It's critical to our seniors, to our schools, churches, our security. But most importantly, the quality of life in our neighborhoods and in our communities are critical to our future. Our future will be shaped by our ability to create economic development. Our future will be shaped by our ability to attract new citizens and to retain the old ones. Our future will be shaped around this council's ability to make the tough decisions today that will create a brighter tomorrow. As I stated before, the quality in our lives in this City of Portsmouth is dependent on the quality of all of our lives. We can't just focus on churchmen and Cavalier Manor and ignore what's going on in Lincoln Park and in Dale's Home. We can't expect to recoup our home values in Old Town and in Crystal Lake and ignore what's going on in Cradock and in Prentice Park. In Portsmouth, it's all about our communities. The greatest threat that we have in this city to our quality of life is our lack of recreational and community centers within our neighborhoods. There are two areas in this city that are in desperate need of quality recreational and community centers. Those are the areas of Truxton and the areas of Cradock, two of our most notable, our most historic communities that produce some of our most distinguished citizens. These two areas are crying for our help. These two areas are in desperate need for community revitalization. These two areas are where we can get the biggest bang for our buck. These two areas serve as a nucleus or a center of gravity of a large portion of our most underserved citizens. We currently have the available funding to make both of these projects a success right now. We've got the money. We can cash fund it right now out of our fund balance. There's also funding for upgrading existing facilities. Now, you might want to ask, why is the mayor up here in an inaugural dress talking about recreational facilities? Well, we will never partner with our schools. We will never partner with our communities and our churches and our parents if we can't find something to do something with these kids after 3 o'clock in the afternoon. We've got 14,000 children in our school system, and 85% of them at 3 o'clock has got absolutely nothing to do. Absolutely nothing to do. So think back when you were a kid, when you were at that playground, you were at that swimming pool, you were at that rec center, all the things that you can remember as a kid that helped shape and mold you to who you are today. So I say to each and every one of you, it's time for a new beginning in this historic city. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. May God continue to bless the great City of Portsmouth and all of her people. And now, as I take my seat, I want to invite Dr. Patricia Saunders Nixon, Associate Professor of Music, Norfolk State University, a member of the historic Ebenezer Baptist Church, and most importantly, a Portsmouth girl. I want to invite her to join us here at the podium on this stage and grace us through song as we in the words, the famous words of our former mayor, Jim Hawley. You know, Mayor Hawley had a lot of sayings. None of them were his. He just perfected them. But one of them was, we need a rekindling of the spirit of the Portsmouth family. And then our moral dedication, I think Councilman Moody touched on that during his comments. And I could vividly see the mayor saying that. We need a rekindling of our spirit. So at this time, I'd like to invite our former or our old council members up on stage with us new as we turn the podium over to Dr. Nixon and we bark on this new era of leadership for this historic city. And yes, Ms. Randall will hold hands. So if you would join us on stage, and Dr. Nixon, if you would.
How can I say thanks for the things you have done for me? Things so undeserved, yet you gave to prove your love for me. The voices of a million angels could not express my gratitude. Oh, that I am and never hope to be. I owe it all to thee. To God be the glory. To God be the glory. To God be the glory. For the things he has done. With his blood he has saved me. With his soul he has raised me. To God be the glory. For the things he has done. Just let me live my life and let it be pleasing, Lord, to thee. And should I give in the praise, let it go to glory. To God be the glory. To God be the glory. To God be the glory. For the things, for the things, for the things
If we were at the ball field, we'd say, play ball. Since this is council, we're going to say, let's get to work. Thank you and good night.